Frank, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Very well. All right. Robin, are we recording?
We are recording.
Very well. Then it is, as it is 7:30 PM, we will call this meeting of the Durham Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is Wednesday, June 3, 2020, at 7:30 PM. And this meeting is being held remotely via Zoom. Would you please call the roll, Jen?
Here.
Joe Pasquale.
Here.
I'm here.
Yeah. Chris Bailey.
Here.
James Frazier.
Here.
Dick Erickson.
Here.
Frank D. Felice.
Here.
Michael Fumiati.
Here.
Will Spooner.
Here.
John DiNunzio.
Here.
Phil Auger.
Here.
And Jim Pietrowski.
Here.
That's everybody.
All right. Do we need to seat anyone?
No, everybody's here.
All right, very well. With that, we'll move on to item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yeah, Frank, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, possibly 5A, to include a moment of silence for George Eames.
I was gonna do that under miscellaneous, Joe, but if you'd like to do that there, we can certainly do that. Would you prefer to do it as 5A?
Yeah, I think in the beginning would be better than at the end.
All right, very well. Joe's made a motion. Is there a second to Joe's motion? Second by Dick. Any discussion? Hearing none? We would modify the agenda. That's so. So a motion to approve the modified agenda would be in order.
Did that, didn't we?
Not as yet, but you can do it now.
I'll move the modified agenda as such.
All right, very good.
Sorry.
That's fine. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining. I declare the motion passed. That brings us to item 5A. Joe, do you wish to speak?
Sure. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in honor of George Eames and his years of service to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe he served around 50 years. He was one of the founding members, I believe, on the commission. George was a trusted, well-trusted individual. He was fair. He was always open-minded, treated the public with respect, and provided great leadership during his term as chairman, which was many years on the commission. So if you'd all join me in a moment of silence for George. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I just wanna kind of follow up with that. It's, George was the chair of the commission, and he was a member of this commission for 55 years. That's, yeah, quite a long time.
It's impressive.
Yeah, and he was a great mentor. I mean, you know, George had a style that he would let somebody speak as long as they wanted to speak, and he never interrupted anyone, even, you know, when you first get on the commission, you really don't know the rules and all that kind of thing. And George was very accommodating with all of that. It was really a great guy and a great chair. He'll be missed. All right. With that, we will move on to public comment, item number six. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any matter that's not for public? Well, we don't have public hearing tonight anyway, so any matter is fine.
Hank, Roger Kleeman here.
Yes, Roger Kleeman.
The town has gotten themselves into with an abandoned road and now it's being developed. Putting something possibly into our regulations, so it might not happen again. Sure, we're responsible to upgrade the road as we are by the zoning regulation.
Well, I think I'll let, I'll let Robin speak to that. I think she's been involved a little bit on that particular subject.
Yeah, so it wasn't an abandoned road, which was the issue. It was just an unimproved town road. And unfortunately, because it was an approved town road, which is different than unimproved, we have an obligation to spend funds to upgrade it, so for public safety. What's come out of that is that the first select woman has asked me to look into other roads, which may be similar to that of Shady Lane, to see if we can go ahead and, you know, look at possibly discontinuing the use of those roads that may be similar in nature. So we are taking on that project. But it is not legal under Connecticut statute if it is an approved town road, whether or not it has been improved, to force a developer to pay for the upgrades to that road. So it is something we're looking into and we're aware of, but it is not something the town can mandate if it's already an approved town road.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Well, I'd like to follow up on that a minute. The other day, it's passable by a fire engine at this point, and yet there's money going into it, about $150,000 this year. The woman asked for 20 the other day, so he's got $170,000 of taxpayers' money to improve this. And I'm gonna follow up, and I understand what you're saying, Robin. But how did that get subdivided the way it did?
Robin, do you want to speak to that?
I can't really speak to it. I wasn't here when it was subdivided. It's always been a town road. I researched it. It goes way, way back, so they had a right to subdivide it. Again, the town didn't have a right to ask for those improvements because it was already an approved town road. Again, under the statute, there's been quite a few updates that have sort of taken away the right of towns and of planning and zoning commissions to mandate improvements, to, to public improvements when someone subdivides. If that was not a town road when they had subdivided and they were proposing a road, there would have been a lot more that the commission could have asked for, but that just wasn't the case.
All right. Other comments from the public? I don't see any other hands up. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, payment bills. Jen, what do we have?
Hi, we have a bill for me for $120 for the May 20 PZ meeting.
All right. Anything else? Oh, that's nice.
I know, huh?
All right. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Move to pay the bills.
Dick Erickson's made a motion to move to pay the bills. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing. I declare the motion passed. In your package, item number eight, minutes of the previous meeting, should have been sent to you for your review. If you've had a chance to look at them.
Move to pay the bills.
You mean the agenda? I mean, the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yeah, is that what it was? I thought you were paying the bills.
No, we did that one already.
Oh, all right. The agenda.
Most, the minutes, Dick.
Oh, the minutes.
Dick's made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
For seconds.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. You declare the motion passed.
I'll have, excuse me, I'll have to start checking off all my printed things.
That's all right. All right, we'll move to item number nine, which is a discussion on budgets and expenditures. And I'd like to, Robin, I mean, Jen, do you have the spreadsheet on the, with the, with the expenditures for legal on it? Can you put that up on the screen? Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
I think only the host can share their screen.
All right. Robin, do you have a copy of that? If you don't?
I don't, but if Jen sends it to me or someone wants to send it to me, I can put it up on the screen.
All right, Jen, can you send that over to Robin?
No, I'm in my kitchen.
All right. Well, I think I can talk through this. I've looked at it, and what I, I would like to, there you go. What, I think what we can do is we can talk through this. And what I would like to have happen is after the meeting here, let's send this out to the commission members. So if they have any other questions, we can come back to it. So there's two things that we wanted to discuss under this item. The first is the cost of legal representation for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And for the fiscal year, we were approved for $18,000. We spent $41,732.12. And I think we really have to look at some of these expenditures and make sure that we're, we're, we're being responsible to the, to the taxpayers of the town of Durham. I wanna just go through a little bit of what this consists of, that, that $41,000 bill. We'll start with the Baldwin appeal. This is the Summit Drive. And for those of you that may not remember, this was a case where there was an apartment, and it was questionable whether it was. It wasn't an apartment. The, one of the neighbors, I guess Baldwin was the name, filed with the courts, and we defended our decision. To date, we have spent $19,775 defending that action. I spoke with Steve this afternoon, and he informs me that there's no more that really needs to happen with this, fortunately, except that the courts need to send a written decision out. They haven't done that because of the COVID-19 situation, but they will be doing that. And however that goes, Steve said, well, I'm not sure if you guys, if it doesn't come down favorably for the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, if you'd like to take a further action. I, I think we've already sunk a lot of money into this. I also wanna let you know that in addition to our spending $19,775 defending this, that property that had the apartment in it is currently listed for sale for $299,000. So it's, it seems that we have spent quite a bit of money, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I have mixed feelings about it. I understand we need to defend our actions. And Dick, who was the chair before me, has always felt that we need to defend the commission's actions, and I think that that's appropriate, but it's an awful lot of money because it was a very drawn-out thing. The next item was the kennels. We spent $11,655 in interpretations on a kennel that was as a right use and never came before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And every time someone says, I want an interpretation, I want an interpretation, we need to be mindful that there's a cost associated with those. The next item is Marquesi. This is the trailers that were located in an industrial zone, and the neighbors complained that there were trailers there. Now, to be, to be clear, the applicant could have, or he wasn't an applicant. He could have been an applicant and applied to do that, but he never did that. We spent $6,452 defending that, pursuing Marquesi for the trailers. And finally, even though it's a wetlands issue and not a planning and zoning issue, there was an expenditure of $3,850 for Vassal. And that was a wetlands issue. Dick is familiar with it, and I am as all, as well, because I'm on wetlands with Dick. But in the next fiscal year, the wetlands legal budget will be separated out. Before this year, that's included in this, in this expenditure of $41,732. So I wanted to let you know that that's kind of where this money went. And I think we need to talk a little bit about, you know, how we wanna proceed on some of these things going forward. Certainly, the case can be made that there's a time that we have to defend our actions. But if we're gonna have Steve Byrne send a letter or do something for these actions, particularly when we now have Robin, who could maybe work with Jerry Russ, and, and kind of reframe these things or make, maybe work with the people to try to save us some money. I think it might be, I might be responsible to do that. I'll open this up, this discussion up to anyone who'd like to speak. Josh, I see your hand, have your hand up?
Go ahead, Josh. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I, we, we talked about this briefly before, when, I think, around budget time, when we were making a budget. And, you know, I really see these as three different things, meaning there's enforcement, which has a legal cost sometimes. There's interpretation, which has obviously legal costs, but those are times we send. And then there's defending our decisions. I agree that maybe we can slim down on the interpretation and possibly the, the enforcement, although not really. So, and the decision seems like, I don't know, I hope we're not suggesting that we go, when a crowd of residents comes out, we don't, you know, sort of stick to our guns because we're afraid we might get sued. Like, that, I think, would be a terrible way of running the commission. And so, like, I think it's possible that we could break out the budget request in the different categories. But, you know, as Dick, I think, had said at one point, we have to defend ourselves, and you can't really, you know, cut back on that expense. It's like, well, whatever it is going to be, same for the other side. Like, if someone gets sued, you have to defend yourself. I mean, I don't, I don't know how else you go about running a commission with a good conscience. So, I mean, I would wanna start with that, which is like, I would advocate for three different buckets of money for legal expenses. And, you know, just know that one is not really up to us. We can estimate it. But it seems like if we get sued, we're gonna have to pay to defend ourselves.
I, I think that's a, that's a really good comment, Josh. I think the idea of splitting it up makes sense. And you're right. I mean, we're gonna get sued. Listen, if we put $19,775 out for Baldwin, I imagine Baldwin put out some sizable chunk of change as well. And, and that's a case where we had to defend our decision, and I think we do have to defend our decisions. But some of these other things where we're getting involved, and I think they could be maybe taken care of in a different arena. For instance, you know, not everything is a planning and zoning matter. Some of these things are board of selectmen. Some of these things are the town. And if they are, I think that they have to kind of be directed that way. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, so, now, it is Dick.
Yeah, Dick.
You know, I've got a lot of moons on a commission, and, and one of the things is that, you know, we have to really, we have to defend our decisions, which are based on regulations, which have been approved by legal and Ad Fin, whoever. And, and while the cost is high, unfortunately, you've got to prevail. Otherwise, if you don't defend your decision, that means the regulation that you attempted to protect is no longer valid. And it's sort of like, anybody can do it.
Right.
It's, it's been, unfortunately, all through my years. And, of course, I've watched the legal stuff, both in business and the town and what. But I think it, you know, if we all of a sudden do not defend our decisions, which are, you know, generally because the whole commission has agreed to what it is, and we have Steve Burns or whoever our attorney is gonna be in the future. That's the way it is. I mean, unfortunately, and there's no other way that I know that you can save on the expense, except saying, we're not gonna defend it. Which, if you do that, well, then obviously, whatever the decision was, now that becomes, whatever the regulation was, it's gone.
Right. That's a good point.
It's, it's an expense, and it's an unfortunate expense. But of course, it's like anybody who has to deal with lawyers or attorneys. That's the name of the game. That's how they make their money. And, but at the same time, it's sort of like, people say our budget has gone over because of the $41,000 or whatever it is. But what do you do? Say, oh, our budget is $25,000, so we're not gonna defend our decisions, which are legitimate? You have to. It's the whole town that we defend. And I don't think anybody, well, I can't say everybody, but most people in this town understand that people are going to take positions that are gonna be contrary to what we decide as we represent the town. And I don't think they have a problem with that, quite frankly.
Yep. All good points. Thank you, Dick, and you're absolutely right. I mean, we have to defend ourselves. I saw, Phil, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I agreed with everything that Dick said, except for the one little bit, which was, he said, they couldn't think of any way to cut the cost. And I don't wanna speak about any particular attorney, but in general, if you only use a single attorney, you're obviously going to pay that attorney's rate. And if some actions are more obviously easily defendable, I wonder if it, that's when you request more junior attorneys or whatnot. If there's just a way to sort of refine what specific legal resources we are using for a particular case.
Okay. Good comments. I think the, the only, the only takeaway I see is that we do have Robin now. Robin has a good understanding of regulations, and so as we approach rewriting or doing whatever we're gonna do with our regulations going forward, I think Robin can be utilized in that capacity, not as a lawyer, but as someone that is very familiar with the regulations. And so maybe we can defer until we're ready with several chapters, or however we're gonna do it, the legal review, so that we don't keep piecemealing it out to, to counsel. All right, so the other thing that I wanted to discuss tonight on this subject is the budget. Jen, do you have the budget numbers? For the, what, what's going before Board of Finance?
What's going before Board of Finance?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, for the next fiscal year. Can you read those off?
I don't have those. I just have what we, hold on. Yes, I do. I like, hold on.
And remember, this is like making sausage. So, you know, we tell them what we want, and then they come back and they say, well, this is what got approved.
Okay, so for Z, you want me to go through each one?
Yeah, just the line items, and tell us what the amount is that...
For CEO officer, $15,000. Recording secretary, $4,500. Professional consulting services, which is town planner, $85,379. Half of that goes to, is offset by Middlefield. Advertising legal notices, $1,700. Dues and meetings, $865. And then legal services, $20,000.
All right.
Oh, 18 was approved.
Oh, 18 was approved? All right. Can you also send that out tomorrow or when you get in the office? So are there any comments on what's, what's coming up for the following, this upcoming fiscal year? All right. I guess none, so we can move on. The next item is going to be item number 10, which is a Regulations Workshop Commercial Use Table Update. And for this, I'm gonna turn this over to, to Robin. So Robin, would you walk us through?
Sure. So we're not gonna get too in-depth tonight, but you all should have got an email from me this morning. It has our current use table, and then I put some questions off to the right-hand side in a column just to sort of start the conversation, to get you guys sort of thinking about your use tables, thinking about where you have or don't have uses in towns. And that, I just threw them in there because tomorrow night, and you guys should have got an invite, is the EDC Commission's meeting, where they're gonna go over the results from their survey. And they had a really good number, like, I think, 500-plus people respond. And so they're gonna go over that with their EDC consultants, and a lot of that will play into what we look at. You know, what are your residents looking for? What can we do as we're updating this use table? And, you know, some of this stuff that I put in there are just more thought-provoking questions for you guys. So, you know, they included, do all of your uses have to be a special exception? And think about that question. Why do they need to be, you know, a special exception? What is so unique about it? Does it have adverse potential impacts? Can any of the uses on this list be combined? Are any outdated? I think a really good question, considering the times that we're in, is, is there any uses you guys would have liked to see during this pandemic that you were going to surrounding towns for that would have been beneficial to have here local in town? You know, that's something to kind of really think about. Are there things that you don't have in town that you would like to see have in town? You know, mixed use. I know that a lot of people don't like that word, but is there an appropriate, you know, maybe it's not in our current commercial zone, but is there an area of town where it might be appropriate for mixed use? Or, you know, something to, to think about in that aspect. It's, it's done very well in a lot of similar-sized towns as Durham. I think it's something that you guys should be considering, something to just keep in mind that builds off that is, we're gonna have to be looking at doing affordable housing plans that are mandated by the state, and where can you get affordable housing units? And, you know, that may come into play with mixed-use developments, because lots of times they can be, you know, apartments above, you know, retail stores. So just kind of think about the linkage that you can have to other types of uses like that. So, you know, these are just sort of questions to sort of start, start going through the table for you guys. It's sort of an exercise for you guys. I really want you to look at each individual use that's on the table and look at those questions and make notes and be prepared to sort of talk about them. And especially after tomorrow night's EDC meeting, you know, how does what the public wants plays into our current use table? So, you know, that's sort of the direction I'm going with. I think that this is a good way. Instead of just scratching the use table and starting new, I thought this might be a good thought-provoking exercise for everybody to sort of really take a look at your town and take a look at your needs and take a look at what we have and sort of start from there.
All right. Questions or comments for Robin?
Yep, Joe. I guess I'd like to make a comment or a question, but it, it appears to me that mixed use already is allowable in our commercial zone area. And isn't that by, in the use table? It's the second use, all uses permitted in a residential zone. So you could put an apartment above... existing buildings today in our commercial area, if I'm.
So that was actually, Joe, I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't put that in my list of stuff for you guys, but it was actually a question I was going to pose to you guys. So as I read that and look at that, it's kind of interesting because that would allude to you guys are already fine with people if they want to build single-family homes. If they wanted to do a duplex, if they can meet that requirement. As Joe said, if they wanted to have an apartment. So was that meant to be worded that way? Did you mean to include all of your residential uses in your commercial district?
Well, we already have single-family homes in our commercial district today.
Yeah, you might. And that's not uncommon in some. It could be, you know, that they were, they were there before the district was, was developed. But my question is, was it intentional to include all of your residential uses as part of your commercial use table?
Dick, I guess you'd have to answer that. You've been on the longest. If you can.
Dick, you want to respond to Joe? You got to take yourself off mute. Or we have to unmute you.
I'm live again.
There you go. You're alive.
But anyway, you know, it's sort of like I, I, you know, again, sitting through a lot of years of regulation and regulation changing. And we keep, you know, getting, we have to get to the real world, which is today, not yesterday. But it's kind of like a couple of things which I read that Robin had sent through about the questioning, some of the things whether, you know, that it currently a lot of special exception items that are in our use table. I always found them very important because the town being as small as it is. And every time, you know, we, we make a regulation and we haven't thought it through, something happens and, you know, reiterating like the dog situation or other situations. But the problem is, is that you have the flexibility because of the town. And particularly when you start talking about Main Street, you're talking about historic district and their interest in the farm residential. I mean, unless we have a way to so-called examine each and every specific thing that's going into these areas, which are going to be long-term or forever, you know, affected. I think, you know, the fact that, that we can use things like a special exception just to make sure that it's at least, you know, going to fit. I mean, we're, you know, we're in a small town, as I said before. We made mistakes before. I've been part of them only because it's, it's sort of, we never thought of that. The situation never happened. And, you know, I'm getting back to this so-called, which is not what we're discussing here, but the special exception thing with, with a lot of our regulations is because we really need to examine them and hear what it is and what the effect is. And, you know, I, I've been around too long to see where if you say, okay, we love this kind of thing and they should exist. And I mean, who's got a problem with, I don't know. Who mentioned a specific business, but it may not be appropriate in every place. When you start zoning things. And, and I'm finding unfortunately that we're starting to break down the farm residential zone. I think we need to start examining stuff that we do. And one of the ways of doing that is maintaining this hopeful unfortunate special exception thing which some people think is maybe not democratic. Anyway, enough said.
Well, thank you very much, Dick. All good comments. And I've seen Phil's got his hand up and then Joe. One thing I did want to, I noticed that when Robin was asking about the old uses and Joe was talking about residential and a commercial. That's not exactly the same as mixed use. Mixed use is two, there's two different uses, so. Kind of a different, a twist on that. Phil, go ahead and then we'll have Joe speak after you.
I understand where Dick was coming from with his comments, but just looking briefly through this, if I had to look something up like milliner, and maybe I'm just ignorant, but I didn't know that's the technical term for a woman's hatmaker. It's possible that we could stand to update this and allow laypeople in 2020 to understand our approach to some of these uses.
Yeah. Yeah, right. I think there's a lot of uses that are defined and questionable. I mean, you know, the terminology says not used. Joe, go ahead. You had your hand up?
Yeah. Well, the comment that I made about the residential portion is to me that because we allow all uses permitted in a residential zone, that you could do mixed use, in my opinion, by our regulation in our commercial zone today, if a developer or a, a building owner so chose to put an apartment above their building, I would think it would be allowable by our use table today. The other comment that I, that I'd like to make is that and maybe some for Robin, that in the past that Jeff, when businesses wanted to start in our commercial areas, if the business fit in, in going into an existing building, if it was allowed in our use table, Jeff, a lot of the time handled that and it didn't have to go through the special permit process because it was allowed in our use table. If Jeff was uncomfortable with some issues that maybe they were proposing to do, then he would have it come to the full commission. But if a flower shop was going to open up in one of the existing buildings today, Jeff would generally give the approval for that. So I think a lot of this use and special permit requirements are generally for new development that is going to be coming into our community and not so much the existing buildings and types of businesses that are allowed by our current use table.
All right. I see Phil has his hand up. Go ahead, Phil.
Yes, thanks. Joe just triggered a thought from when he had commented earlier on the, on that second line item there. I think that it would be beneficial in the same way I'm saying maybe we update some of the language and get rid of things like milliners that maybe aren't that important, that we more proactively state what we are looking to, not even looking to do, but just state out things that might be out there, not say, oh, well, I think mixed use could happen because we have this one line that says all uses permitted and because you can put apartments in residential, I think somebody could build an office and throw an apartment above it. I'd rather that would be straightforward and clear about modern construction.
So are you suggesting that perhaps maybe we should mention mixed use specifically and say mixed use is permitted and?
What I would be interested in, and I don't know if Robin has it at hand or if we should each be off researching on our own, but I imagine there are other schemes that are in place for commercial uses in, in other areas that might trigger some thoughts from us about like, hey, is this a better slightly updated view of things?
Robin, do you have any comments?
Yeah. So, I mean, Phil, if you're like thinking about like other towns and how they have their use tables and how they talk about mixed use and stuff, yeah, there's, there's a lot of ways I could have gone with your use table. I thought it would be good to kind of have you guys really think about these to be, you're, you're obviously the residents in town. You've been elected to serve on this board. You know a lot about what the town's needs are and what, you know, what you should be looking to the future for. Obviously, you know, the town is looking for and in, as part of my hiring process, I was told, you know, economic development is a big thing that are trying to interconnect with planning. So, you know, when I looked at this, I thought it would be a really good exercise for you to, you guys to go through and instead of me just wiping, wiping the slate clean, which we could absolutely do and sort of fill it in to just sort of look at what uses you currently have that might be appropriate to keep. What uses can be combined? You know, a lot of use tables don't spell out, you know, ten different personal services. They might have two categories of personal services and then they list, you know, the examples next to them. Retail, same thing. They might have, you know, small retail with a, under, you know, three thousand square feet and then a mid-sized retail and then, you know, your largest retail and there's three different use, you know, kind of use categories for those. So that's what I mean by looking to see what could be combined and maybe we're a little bit more generic with our terminology. And I do, you know, I have to say the whole allowing everything in your residential zone and your commercial zone is, I don't think I've ever seen that in a reg before. So it's just something that gave me pause and I think that as part of that, we should be looking at our residential uses. And you should really be considering, do you want to be giving up your relatively small areas that you have for economic development and commercial uses for, for residential uses? So that's a different conversation than mixed use because you'd be combining, you know, that residential component with your commercial component. So, you know, we should be looking at both of those things. So I, you know, whatever way the commission wants to go in doing the use table is fine with me, but I thought considering what the EDC did that we're going to see tomorrow and how this was set up, that this was a good process to go through where you could all have, you know, a real say in, in what the use table is now and what we turn it into.
Thank you, Robin. I see Josh has his hand up and after Josh, I've got Matt Thompson. Go ahead, Josh.
Well, Robin hit a few of the points that I was going to make and, but just to say that I'm in favor of that, which is, yeah, categorizing things more around, yeah, indoor retail versus if they have an outdoor component, like, because I agree, it seems sort of strange to me that all of these are special exceptions except for daycare facilities for which I would think might be riskier in a commercial zone than, you know, some of these others. So I do think that we should take a hard look at it and then think more about what we would really want a special exception for, like what is the nuisance or what is the danger or what is the thing that we? Because I don't know, it's very hard and I know this is part of the point, right? You can't imagine every case. But I think it's also stifling for small businesses to think about having to go through a special exception process when their use is maybe, you know, just an indoor retail, which probably fits very cleanly and shouldn't have to come before us. So that's, that's my point. I probably have one more, but I can't now think of it.
If you think of it, let us know. All right. So Matt, go ahead.
Um, I, I don't want to go down like a path that we kind of already touched on tonight, which should be the dog kennels. But I guess my question is, because I know a lot of this started before I was on the board, what was the process for the dog kennels in terms of getting approved? I know we want to avoid situations like that. Is that something that we want to take into account when we're doing this? I don't, I don't know.
Well, so the dog kennels was an as a right use. And at the time that was thought was an agricultural use, whether it is or isn't, that's a whole nother subject of discussion, but that's, that's what happened with that particular use. You know, there's places in the, maybe if Robin's reworking the, I think now she's concentrating on, on, on commercial. But, you know, maybe in the use tables, it's appropriate to put that as a use in the tables too. I'll turn, I'll ask Robin. What do you think, Robin?
The kennels?
Yeah, I guess that was Matt's question about the process that was used for the kennels and because it was an as a right use, is that something that we could avoid an issue maybe by putting it in a particular place or, or not?
Yeah. So I mean, anything you have referenced in your regulations should be on your use table somewhere. So you made that as a special regulation. It's in the regs now and it definitely should be placed on your use tables for whatever zones you allow it in. So if it's allowed, you know, residential, commercial, industrial, it should show up on all those use tables for sure. And I just want to go back. I forgot. I wanted to just go back to what Joe had said about Jeff signing off on things that are special exceptions. So planners can sign off on something if, say it was a retail to retail. It has to be the exact same use going into a building that's already been approved. But if a new use was to be proposed in a building, so I'm just going to say, say it was a personal service and now it's going to retail. We actually don't have the authority under the general statutes to be signing off on those if you have them listed as a special exception. If there are site plan approval, which is, you know, a, a different process, it's not a public hearing process. That power can be granted to your planner, but not a special exception. So like for like, exactly the same with no changes. Yes, you could do that. Any kind of change, use change, even if it's on the use table, we're not supposed to be signing off on.
Okay. Matt, did you have another comment?
I was just following, I guess that was kind of my question is when the dog kennel got approved, did that go just to Jeff or did that go for the board? I, I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
That just went to Jeff.
Okay.
Because it was as a right. It's, it's like if you were going, if you were going to build a single-family house, it would just go to Robin. She'd sign the permit because it's an as a right use.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Of course, it isn't anymore, right? We, we took care of that. All right. Josh, I see you have your hand up?
I remembered my last point, which was it does seem a little crazy to me that we're allowing all residential uses in the commercial zone for the very reason that I think was commented on that, you know, here, part of the, the, you know, survey that they're going to go through tomorrow, one of the questions was like, should we, you know, find more commercial land? And yeah, part of that is like, well, better utilize the commercial land you have. And to Joe's question about whether that is a mixed use, I don't view it as that, right? Because you can build a single-family house, but I don't even know how that permit would go if they said, oh, I'm going to have a retail store and a single-family house. That's not really, I think, what we want. I think we would want something like an apartment over a store, but that's not, I don't think how it would, it's not how it reads to me.
Okay. Joe, you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess when Josh's comments earlier about the retail and not having that be a special exception, that I just think that we should be kind of cautious and aware that, you know, depending on the size of, of the retail operation or some other uses here that given consideration to taking them off is that if the size and scope of the development are major developments, development in the, maybe say a twenty thousand square foot building, the impacts are going to be different than a thousand to two thousand square foot retail operation. And I think some of the reasoning behind in the past for having these special exceptions are that, you know, we do have significant traffic issues on our main street. All our intersections are in failure mode. And that safety, I think, is, is a concern to ensure the health and the safety of our community and allowing us the flexibility, should there be modifications that are required to a proposal, that we have that ability to make modifications to what's being proposed versus just making it a, a, a site plan or, and hope they'll modify or a, a straight permitted use. I think there's significant risk like Dick had mentioned earlier to wholesale removal of the special exceptions to a lot of these uses, especially with the concerns about the traffic conditions that we already have on our main street.
All right. Robin, do you want to respond to any of the comments that were made or?
Yeah. So just quickly, I'm not necessarily, I'm not proposing anything. First of all, all of those questions are just meant to be for you guys to go through your, you know, twenty or thirty uses and look at those six questions, six, seven, eight questions that I gave you. And for each one of them sort of make a note as to, you know, does a, you know, free provider medical office require a special exception? Maybe it does. The other thing to consider is, you know, kind of feeding off from what Joe said before. So if you already have a developed site and someone is just changing the use, you know, maybe we are going to add, maybe we should add something that says if it's a developed site and you're just changing a use to something on our use table, then maybe it's just a site plan review at that point and not a special exception. But if it's new development, maybe it's a special exception. So the, all those But if it's new development, maybe it's a special exception. So the, all those questions are just meant for you to start thinking about those as you're looking at the uses. There's no right or wrong answer to them. It's just meant to really, you know, make you guys sort of think about. There are definitely are uses, you know, if you have a 30,000 square foot store come in on a, a new parcel and it's on route 17. You know, that is something you're probably gonna want as a special exception. And so that you can have a little more say over, um, but you know, if somebody's coming in and they're just, uh, you know, maybe looking at a site and changing. You say, you know, it's going from a restaurant to a retail store. Probably doesn't need to be a special exception. You could go with site plan approval, just so you could take a look at, you know, parking ratios, that sort of thing. Um, you know, site plan approval is a one night process. Normally they still have to come in with a full plan. They still have to show you everything. But they don't have to go through the 30 days to do the public hearing process. So those are the things I really want you guys to start thinking about. As you go through the use table. That's, that's sort of what that's meant to do. Again, no. Right or wrong answer, just really trying to make you guys think about each and all of those and just how they come into play and, and whether or not it's, it's necessary for that.
So Robin, how do you see the, uh, the, the response that we get from tomorrow night's EDC meeting? How do you see that playing into regulation review? What, what are your thoughts of how that would go down? Or I haven't seen any of the EDC stuff, so I'm, it's all gonna be new to me and I imagine for all the commissioners. I'm not sure if you've seen it yet, but, uh, but let's say they say we should have, we should do X, Y, and Z. What's the process? What, what are you thinking that we would do?
So, you know, I think it's really great that the EDC is doing this with their consultant. And I would really, um, encourage the commission at an upcoming meeting to invite EDC and their consultant to. Participate in the discussion of the results. I have seen some of the raw data. I, it was pages and pages and pages long. My understanding is their consultants putting it together, so it's a little more usable, um, for tomorrow night. Um, but, you know, I think you can use that and that, you know, these are your residents that, um, gave feedback on the types of uses that they would like to see in Durham. And I think, you know, that plays a huge part in you guys updating your use table because you can ask the question. Is it something that's on our, our use table currently? If it is, that's great. If it's not something on our use table and it's something that the public wants, we should be discussing putting it on the use table. Um, and, you know, that, that's the kind of feedback you're gonna get from that. And I also think, you know, as you're going through this, you know, we'll eventually have to do a public hearing process to adopt. Um, this new use table and any other changes we made, we make to this section. And if it's something that the public wants to see and they've already commented on, it goes a long way to help sort of give that positive feedback to the commission as we're doing that.
Okay. I had a question for you, Robin. Is there a reason that we're looking at just the commercial use table and not all the different use tables that we have?
I didn't want it to be overwhelming. I thought it made sense to start with commercial first since economic development is sort of at the forefront. And it kind of fed into what EDC is doing now. Um, we definitely will be looking at industrial. We definitely will be looking at residential. But I think when you try to look at so many things at one time, you can kind of get lost in that. So I wanted to keep them separately to, to sort of work through them. I just think it'll, it'll make for a more positive experience.
And do you have any thoughts about the C1, C2 subject?
C1, C2?
Yeah, there's, there's two different zones. Commercial zones.
I only have one in my regs.
Well, there used to be two.
Just says C.
Okay. I think, uh, if you check the zoning map, you'll see that there's, they might've been combined at some point, but, uh.
I have the map open in front of me, frankly.
Oh, there's only one? Now is that, is that the, is that the zoning map Phil or is that the one from the, from the, from the, uh, P O C D?
Um, I went to town of Durham, CT.org, and then I went to zoning map under the planning and zoning page.
Okay.
I hope, I hope it is.
Okay. Good, good. So then I guess we have nothing to discuss on that because it looks like that's been done already. All right. Uh, any other comments, uh, Robin?
Uh, no. So, you know, just, um, I didn't have them on, on your list, but if you guys want to add them just, and I sort of already talked about them. But again, you know, expansion of a commercial zone, is there any areas in town which would be feasible for that? I don't know if there is or not, but you guys would probably know better than me being residents and knowing the town much better. Um, and, you know, could you have more than one commercial zone, you know? So part of playing into talking about special exception versus site plan is maybe the appropriateness of uses. So you, you sort of have what I'll call a north gateway and you kind of have the southern side. Um, you have 68. I don't know if there's any, um, real commercial zones on 68, but kind of take a look at all that, you know? We don't have to have just one commercial zone. Um, you know, you could look at those areas and say, well, you know, maybe. And I'm gonna use grocery store and you'll know why tomorrow. Um, maybe a grocery store is appropriate, uh, you know, in some place in town. And I know one was proposed in the past and it didn't quite work out, but, you know, maybe a smaller version on an appropriate site would. Um, but, you know, maybe that is something that's only allowed in a new, you know, commercial zone on the south end of town. Um, and these are all fictional, so don't think I have something planned for you. Um, so just, you know, kind of, you know, thinking about that, like how in, in connecting, um, you know, you have your two, your two areas of commercial on route 17. And you have your historic district in between. Um, and, you know, what would make people want to walk from your north end commercially to your south end? You do have sidewalks. You have a beautiful town green. Um, so just sort of thinking about those, you know, what types of uses would bring people in to do that? Um, so again, it's a thought provoking exercise and I thought, you know, you guys are the best suited to do that. Um, I'll obviously give suggestions as we go along, but, um, you know, I really think you guys could benefit maybe from more than one commercial zone.
Okay. So maybe C1, C2 again, who knows? All right. Yeah. Are there any other comments before we move on? All right. Yeah. If not, we'll move to item number 11, which is the zoning enforcement officer's report. I see Jerry Russ is here. Uh, Jerry, what, what do you have for us?
Hey, how are you guys? Hope everyone's well. Um, I did provide a, uh, sent an email to Rob and to send out to everyone regarding, uh. The happenings for the CEO. There were a few complaints that just came in yesterday that I followed up with today. One was, once this, 167 Bear Rock Road, uh, possible expansion on a, on a structure. I went out there. You might be familiar. I wasn't with a Calvi property on Bear Rock Road. I just, it's an old established farm. Looks like there's construction going on, but not an expansion of a footprint. So, uh, I made a quick note in the zoning report, um, the CEO report, but I think just a building permit would be required. There's more of a shoring of a, of an old barn and, and, um. Reciting it and, and putting a roof assembly on. So I'll speak with, um, the building official about that. Uh, there was another one that, uh, these are, uh, comments or, uh, concerns from Bob Bascom. Uh, he brought to the attention of, of the town. Over on 15 Hattam Quarter Road, 15 R. It's a commercial site. That has a little stream that runs through the backside of it behind Liberty Bank. It's, uh, it's been a construction site. As long as I've known, but there was a large hoop house that was just put up like a gray tarp, uh, temporary structure. But it's in a, in a permanent nature with, um, concrete, concrete, um, blocks, large concrete blocks, um, anchoring it down. And so I spoke with the tenant there, not the, uh, property owner and, and, uh, he wasn't aware of anything that he couldn't do. But he'll be happy to, one, speak with his landlord and, and get through the process of if he can, if he's permitted to do or not. But I, I don't even know who the property owner is. This is, this is something I followed up with this afternoon. Um, I did do a site walkout at 143 Howe Road. Um, Sharon D. Silvestro. Has been at this property for a long time and there's a neighbor at 109 Howe Road that. Has a couple of horses and a little grazing area or a, a paddock, if you will. Um, that's adjacent right next door to her. And so there's some boundary questions and then, um, another issue with manure. And, um, if he's encroaching, um, the setbacks would not permit his horses to graze and, uh, be housed within. 30 feet of the property minimally. He's only got an acre there. Uh, so I've, I've got to reach out to the property owner there. That was a site visit I did this afternoon and with the, uh, the Sharon D. Silvestro at 143 Howe Road. Uh, followed up with the lot 15 on Maple Road. Um, they have stopped their, their. Deposits of, of Phil bringing into that site and he's getting his paperwork ready. For a driveway permit and a future build on that site. So there hasn't been any activity on that in the last six weeks. Um, excuse me. The, there was a comment from one of the commissioners that might've been Will, uh, regarding the. Next to, um, Krausers on, on. Now, what is that, uh? Part access? Pesca Road?
Yeah, Pesca Road and Route 79.
Right, right. Pesca Road. So while that car has since been removed after I spoke with them, they won't be. Using that spot any longer to sell any vehicles. It was an unregistered vehicle. Um, to sell the vehicle there on your own property. Wasn't necessarily a violation, but it, there was a question on the, uh, whose property it was, and it was a shared property. So it grew, uh, some contention there, but that sense has been removed. Um, let's see. The 21 R Dead Hill, um, I need to work with Rob and I was out there again today and I haven't seen much activity on the removal of. Of these abandoned, well, they're, they're broken down cars, immovable and operable. So I, we have to start a timeline now. This, I haven't seen any movement. There was some for the last three weeks and I haven't seen any sense. So this is not going away. So we have to take some official action on that. So we'll be working with Robin to do that. Other than that, I don't have any new. New items. They, I, I've been visiting 60 Oak Terrace. That home occupation, he's been in compliance. Um, we've had multiple conversations with he and his neighbors. Um, everybody seems to be content with the way things are going right now. Um, he is not using that, his residence as a, uh, construction site. So that's pretty much to bed. Other than that, I don't have anything new.
All right. Any commissioners have questions for, uh, for Jerry?
Uh, Jerry?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Now, I was just wondering, uh, you mentioned, uh, particularly on, uh, Hattam Quarter Road. The area you're talking about, I know is mostly wetlands. And I, I was just wondering whether you were coordinating with the wetlands, uh, enforcement officer, Joe Carter?
I, I reached out to him this afternoon. I did.
Okay. That's, that's, you know, there's some and I also put a rest of the commissioners, uh, you know, maybe perhaps not everyone's aware that. We, in fact, Wetlands Commission does have an enforcement officer by the name of Joe Carter.
Right, right.
And, uh, you know, it's important that he be in a loop, obviously, Jerry. And if you are in touch with him, that's great.
Right. Um, I have been and, uh, there's another, another, uh, site that I, I failed to mention, but that was up on, um, Blue Hills Road. But that's, that's in compliance. Now that's being, uh.
Yeah.
Taken care of quite well. Um, now my question, I don't know much history about that 15 R Hattam Quarter Road. Regarding its commercial status. I mean, there's a number of heavy equipment, storage, uh, there's. Buildings that are on the property line on the backside of Grippo's and Liberty Bank. I mean, that whole site is out of compliance. Um, adding a, a new hoop structure. I mean, I'd say it's about a 20 by 40, 20 by 36 hoop structure. Uh, it certainly needs a, a permit, but I, I'm not sure how. Haven't had a chance to look at the history, how this has been handled in the past. Um, if there's wetlands and there's heavy equipment that's been stored there and it's a working site. I, you know, I, I'm kind of, um, befuddled how it got to this point. And then, um, after a, an application and a, um. A process to put this, uh, hoop house in, it may not. It may not conform. Um, where, where's the, where's the? How do I enforce the rest of it that's been going on there that hasn't been in compliance?
All right. Well, you know, that's, you're talking about the Aragony property, right?
Is that, I don't even know who owns it. So I am sorry. I, I just learned of it yesterday and followed up with it today.
Right. So, you know, unfortunate, unfortunately, but, uh. Situation, which you know is, is that, uh, a lot of stuff is grandfathered only because. Free day, cleaning and zoning, wetlands and everything else. But I think if you check with Joe and then between you and Joe and, you know. Hopefully when we all can start going to the town hall and checking.
Getting in the office.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and find out exactly, uh, you know, what the property line is and, and what the usage is in a lot of instances. Because they're noted on the properties thing, but.
Right.
Something that's gonna probably be a couple of weeks out. Uh, but, uh, but anyway, uh, I'll, I'll check with Joe and.
Certainly.
Uh, you know, ultimately because I live on Hattam Quarter Road, I might have to recuse myself, but nevertheless. Um, you know, I, I think what you're saying and you, you, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're staying in touch with Joe. Because I think between the both of you, a lot of these situations can be, you know, alleviated at least. So, uh, anyway, thank you for what you do.
Okay. Well, pleasure. So I'll follow up with Joe on that. I, I.
Please.
Will, um, you know, I can pull up the website, the GIS to see where the property lines are and there's, you know. Indications of where the structures are, but, you know, there's quite a lot of activity there daily with heavy equipment and the storage of. Trailers and backos and the like. Uh, you know. The, the question is enforcing the whole site is gonna be challenging, uh, having one, bringing one into compliance when. Perhaps the rest isn't.
Right.
Um, so that, that's my challenge. Thanks.
All right. I see Phil has his hand up. Go ahead, Phil.
Yes, it was just, uh, I guess a point of clarification. I'm trying to, unfortunately the word temporary shows up numerous times in the regs. But I do see that some temporary shelter for machinery is allowed without approval. And I see that temporary is defined to be, um, not more than two years. So arguably if the individual moved those hoop barns around every once in a while. And just because there's mafia block there doesn't, to me, strike of permanence, especially if you have an excavator to move them. You can move them every week.
I'm sorry, Phil, that was the argument that the, um, that the tenant had. Exercised is that, well, it's really temporary. He wasn't pushing back. He was, his indication was, and that it was temporary.
Yeah. And I would, I would support that argument is my point. And I'm trying to understand where in these regs, uh, we would be saying that's not allowed.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, maybe we can go through that a little bit with, uh, between Joe Carter and Robin and yourself, Jerry.
Right.
Kind of get, uh, come up with an action plan for that, uh, that building. And if it, if it's by, if it's allowed by the regulations, it's allowed by the regulations, you know? Yeah. All right.
That's, well, I have folks.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on? Don't see any hands up. So we will move on to the towns planners report. Robin, anything to add?
Uh, not really. I just, uh, thought I'd just give you guys a really quick update that, um, since, um, we adopted, which is not in effect yet. The farm, uh, winery, brewery, et cetera, reg. I have had three people reach out to me, um, with interest. So, um, I, uh, foresee this summer having a few applications for you for those uses. One would hopefully being a farm brewery and one being a farm winery.
Great. Okay. All right. Uh, if there's nothing else, we can move on to item number 13 miscellaneous. Now, the only thing I had here, uh, because we, we did have a moment of silence for George already. Uh, what is the, uh, that you, uh, make every effort to attend the EDC, uh, meeting? I've asked Jen to send you the information on that. I know she has already. Um, that's tomorrow night and then what time? I think seven o'clock. Is that right?
Yeah, it's at seven.
Okay. All right. Great. All right. Uh, that's all I have. Is there anything else? Anyone else would like to add? Uh, Joe, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. You're under miscellaneous now?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Um, there's a couple of things that I'd like to mention. The, um, Zoom recordings. The Zoom recordings for all our meetings, why are they not being posted on the town website? Since we started this under the regular minutes and agendas, there's only one Zoom meeting that's posted available for residents to view.
I'm not sure. I know there's, I know there's a requirement that you still have to have regular minutes and that fulfills the obligation. But Robyn, maybe you could speak to that because I, I think you're kind of the, in charge of the, the meeting here.
Yeah. So I don't have anything to do with the meeting recordings. It's my understanding that all of the meetings that are being recorded via Zoom are going to a Town of Durham YouTube page. I can certainly get clarification from Alicia on that. That's sort of outside of my end of the meeting stuff. So I'm not positive, Joe, but I'm happy to reach out to Alicia if you'd like me to.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that, I mean, if we're utilizing Zoom and it's probably beneficial for the residents of our, our community to be able to have access to watch what we're doing and versus what, what the minutes reflect. I think we should have both posted and, and available. The other comment.
It's there on YouTube. I'm looking at like the May 20th P and Z. I can see zero views. They're not very popular posts, but they're there at one hour and 54 minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Phil.
Okay. And then the other thing, since we brought up the budget and saving money, that maybe we could move the zoning enforcement officer report until up early in the meeting, maybe after public comment, and then we could save a few dollars there on, instead of having Jerry wait through a two hour, you know, tonight, we're kind of short. But the, the last meeting, we're having them wait a couple of hours to report on the zoning enforcement stuff. And we could save a few dollars there for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And Jerry, would that work for you if we moved you up earlier?
That would be just fine.
Good. We will do that then. So Jen, if you would modify the future agenda so that it reflects that, we'll have, love Jerry. And I don't know, Robyn, do you want to go, do you want to stay at the, towards the end with your presentation or do you want to be earlier as well?
I'm fine right where I am. So you don't need to change me around.
All right. So Jen, if you would make that change and going forward, that would be great. And that's all I have. And anyone others, any other comments? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order, Dick.
All right, got it.
All right. A motion's been made by Dick Erickson to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I got a second? All right. Second from Mike. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, clear emotion pass. Have a good evening and stay healthy. I'll, we'll, we'll see you soon.
See you.